Welcome, welcome to the Worcester School Committee. Great. Okay, welcome. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance to the national anthem.
Quiet down, please.
Aye, I'm choice allegiance.
Quiet down, please.
Of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell them we'll do a, do a roque. Ms. Clancy? Ms. Clancy?
Lord.
Here.
Here. Oh, here. Here. Here.
Here. Okay. Actually, everybody step by this side of the room if you can, please. If you can. Okay, we are going to start with the consent decree. Those in favor, proposal ordered. We are on public petitions to consider a presentation of the guard school. I'm sorry, public comment first, I'm sorry. We're gonna do public comment, and you have two minutes, your name and say your residence.
Public comment now.
What's that?
Public comment now?
Yeah, I'm gonna do public comment. Can you turn up the mic maybe a little bit?
Okay. Hello? Hello? All right. Hi, good evening. My name's Melissa Verdiere. I am the EAW president, and I'm also a resident of Worcester. So. So, good evening, Mayor Petty, Dr. Monares, and members of the school committee. I come to you tonight to ask again that the committee members, the superintendent and the deputy superintendent, seek adequate funding from the city above the required minimum spending in order to best meet the needs of our students and staff. As I listened to City Manager Batista's interview this morning, I found it interesting that he stated that no one from the school committee nor the district administration has asked for additional funding for educational budget. As Worcester Public Schools continues to struggle to fill its slew of vacancies, it's imperative that we become more comparable to surrounding districts in terms of salaries. I encourage you, Dr. Monares and Mr. Allen and the school committee members, to attend City Council on May 2nd and May 9th, both Tuesdays at nine, um, 6:30 rather, right here, to urge the city to increase the minimum level of spending and on the operational budget. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
We're just gonna try to get through as many speakers as we can, but your name and, we're gonna try to get through as many speakers as we can so people can just let people speak. So, two minutes, and your name and say your residence.
Good evening, Mayor, parent, and school committee members. We will keep our comments to two minutes. However, I have several speakers to share collectively. We will each introduce ourselves and begin with our statement. My name is Jahibah Rodriguez. I'm a para educator at Sullivan Middle School, and I am from Webster, Massachusetts.
Good evening, Sal Ramos. I have been a para educator in the Worcester Public Schools for 24 years, and I'm also the first vice president of the EAW.
Just for the record, can you say your residence and your name, please? That's all.
I'm a resident and voter in Worcester.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Olga Getopoulos. I live in Worcester, and I work at West Hattonic Elementary for approximately six years now.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Upperhamian. I live in Worcester. I work at Burncoat High School, and I've been there for 10 years.
Good evening. My name is Dea Base. I live in Worcester. I work at Jacob Hyatt Magnet School and have been a para in Worcester Public Schools for two years.
Hello, my name is Jeanne Mitrillo. I'm an IA, and I work at Nelson Place School with the depth program with 3K.
Hi, I'm Alex Rivera. I am a new IA at Burncoat Middle School, and I live in Worcester.
May we approach to give our documents?
Sure. Do you want to grab those, son?
Hello again.
Go ahead.
Because I have come so many times and tell my story in English, and if not worked, I had decided to use my Spanish. Esta noche queremos que nos escuches de nuestras voces, en nuestros idiomas, en todas las formas diversas y hermosas que nos comunicamos. Somos los para educadores de las escuelas públicas de Worcester, hogar de estudiantes donde todos los rincones del mundo que hablan dos senos de idiomas. Ayudamos, enseñamos, y empoderamos a nuestros estudiantes todos los días. Tienen mucho potencial nuestros estudiantes, y lo vemos y lo ayudamos a crecer y brillar. Los estudiantes llegan a Worcester con una variedad de habilidades, desafío y esperanzas, y nosotros somos los que estamos ahí para ellos. Gracias.
Nuestro trabajo va desde ayudar en las aulas a de preescolar y el jardín de infantes con nuestros estudiantes más jóvenes hasta el programa de transición de estudiantes de 18 a 22 años que se están moviendo al mundo adulto de la educación superior y las oportunidades de trabajo. Trabajamos en las aulas asegurando que se sigan los planes de educación individuales de los estudiantes y otras adaptaciones para que cada estudiante pueda aprender de las maneras que funcionan.
Que yepi pi dossi se kha the piklomofia ini piklomofia tis omu ilominis ke graptis glossas. Opu hi mathitess milami polas glosses hispanica, portogalica, albaniani, armenianos, ke pola alla kathos ke i americaniki nomatiki glossa ke bril.
Yerp mer usanuch nera yev undanik nera haskunumen vor menk gahorek shvel irenc hed himnagan lezov. Ir nent achkik ner paylumen irenk askan abahov han kist yev ki den vor menk irenc galasenk.
Per shandet yev, per tei praksimit osa interpretimita tieste nendih moimenn embroidene detayeve kulturore che spesh shocheroj ne djuhan. Se psenen nu kjemite huajche vin avetam per te prakshuer osa interpretuar pa kontext osa pervoyen shkolat publiket usteri ne yemine djenyet liden boschluk unet kuptuarit che spesn dog. Ku grup after sish esh unik edukatorve brenda den neti, brenda den netijits systemin, den nu kun to zevendes soed ne ganyev eti tret. Tale minderit.
Since one of our para educators could not be here because she is currently working a second job to be able to make a living wage, I will bring her recording to you.
Hello, good afternoon. Omen bi akhe bulle ahah ahin manfema ni eyo nu chumon nemle. Eka fe akhe nu chumon alo bekembi ke amefoloi ni jo woman nemle ke wasukun nepe. She efef mufemo. U nyirado. Bye-bye.
These are our views. If you don't understand some or any of it, welcome to the daily life of a lot of our students. If you'd like a, if you'd like a verbal translation of what was said, please visit one of our schools where you can see para educators in action, and we will even help translate for you as we do every day for our students, caregivers, and other school staff.
And this is one of the many reasons that you guys need to pay educators what they deserve. We bring language, we bring knowledge to our students and our community. Thank you for listening.
Okay, anybody else, or? Say your name and say your residence.
Hi, I'm Chris Brennan. I am a teacher at Worcester Technical High School. I'm from Sturbridge. I've been in Worcester for about 24 years. Good evening, Superintendent Monares, Mayor Petty, and members of the school committee. More than 1,500 educators are here tonight to demand that you bargain in good faith. Contracts for all educators. We would probably have a lot more educators here, but many of us are working second and third jobs. So far, many of us feel the responses given to our bargaining teams have been unsatisfactory at their best. We want you to bargain with us, not an attorney who only profits from extending these negotiations. Two weeks ago, every school in the district held a unity standout to mourn the loss of our educator morale across the district. These are, these are our sign-in sheets, which I'm gonna give to you in a moment. They are a logbook of our grievances, a record of the ways we feel you have killed our morale. Among these murderous culprits is the fact that most of us have been working without a contract for over 250 days. Most of us have been without a fully realized contract for more than three and a half years. This is appalling. A sampling of some of the other reasons our morale has perished: 1%, 2%, and 3% offers from you, understaffed schools and lost preps, excessive other duties, the cost of our healthcare plans, stagnant wages, the list goes on and on. It is incumbent on you as leaders of the Worcester Public Schools to demand the City Council fund our schools more than just 1% over mandated budgets. You need to demand that the City Council values our students as much as we, their educators, do. Thank you.
Thank you. Say your name and say your residence.
My name is Kirsten Fraser. I am a multilingual educator at Sullivan Middle School. I am a resident of OCAM, but I have been teaching here in Worcester for a year now, and I would not trade it for the world. However, what I want to know is, what do you value? What we fund is what we value. This is pinned on Ms. Novick's Twitter page, and it's one of my favorite quotes. After 16 months and 13 meetings, the district refuses to reach a fair contract with Worcester educators who have repeatedly lowered their ask. Meanwhile, the cost of living here in Worcester and in other places around skyrockets along with inflation. Teaching demands have increased along with the mental health and behavioral issues of our students. More and more six-figure school administrators are being hired by the superintendent during the first year of her job instead of, instead of settling the contract with Worcester educators during an election year. The district has paid an untold amount in billable hours and continues to pay these billable hours to lawyer Sean Sweeney, who lives on Cape Cod, instead of using a local lawyer. That's a lot of money to go around, but it's just not going towards the contract for Worcester educators. Our last three-year contract expired in 2020. While Worcester educators have worked under MOAs during the pandemic, that's not the same thing as a full contract. We have worked without a contract this school year and continued to go above and beyond for our students, but we are not martyrs. We are professionals. We deserve a competitive wage which contributes the bare minimum to Worcester Public Schools, I'm sorry, we deserve a competitive wave that reflects our advanced degrees. Surrounding towns have paid up to $13,000 more than Worcester, which contributes the bare minimum to Worcester Public School funding. You can blame the budget on the city manager, you can blame the budget on the city council, but ultimately, the buck stops with you all, the Worcester School Committee and the superintendent. The district has the money to hire numerous six-figure administrators and is reportedly shopping around for more space to house them all. So it is true, what we fund is what we value. So again, I ask, what do you value? Start valuing Worcester educators or pay the price of ignoring the needs of our schools, a system which is currently failing our students.
Say your name and say your residence.
Yep, Melinda Martin, registered voter in the city of Worcester. Education has been Worcester's primary export for over 60 years, yet the school committee and the superintendents here continue to marginalize the only thing they are charged with cultivating. What do you think makes an education system thrive? Do you think it is making decisions without talking to the people that are affected the most? Do you think it is a school committee refusing to negotiate with the teachers' union in good faith? Is it the 17 new administrative positions created by the superintendent, each of which could pay the salary of two Worcester Public School teachers? Of course it isn't. You know what it is. What makes a great school system is educators who meet not only our students' academic needs, but also their social-emotional needs, and in many cases, their need to feel valued and wanted. This basic human need is what the educators in Worcester are lacking. The course of these negotiations have revealed a school committee and superintendent who refused to hear what we have been saying for eight months now. Value us and value our students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica McGuire. I'm a teacher at Worcester Technical High School. I am a parent of three Worcester Public School students, a community member, and I am heavily involved in my children's school communities. My husband is from Worcester, and I have lived here for almost 20 years. I love Worcester. I love this city, and I am appalled at the way that teachers are being treated right now. I am a teacher, but I am before you tonight as a parent. My children have been in the Worcester Public Schools for the entirety of their educations, Nelson Place, Forest Grove, and Doherty High. Their educations have been top-notch because of their teachers. And those teachers deserve to get paid. I wanted to share with you my experience tonight about some of those teachers. Under extreme duress, with deep instincts to salvage the year, and despite being told that teachers were just supposed to be keeping tabs on everybody, third-grade teacher Donna Greenleaf kept trying to engage her students anyway. She figured out how to rig a camera setup in 2020 to do science experiments with her third graders. She did read aloud so that students didn't backslide and so that they could finish enjoying a story together. In 2020, 21, Cheryl Watson and Nelson Place spent her lunchtime online so that students had a chance to socialize together. She deftly wrangled 24 fourth graders, and by the end, I wanted to attend her online class because of her creativity, because she was dynamic and she was very funny, and she did all of that for six hours online. Forest Grove teacher Ms. Sprognow, Ms. Skerrill hooked my daughter Brenna with their lessons, and my daughter Brady began her classes in ETA at Doherty High School online with Mr. Garcia, Ms. Perez, and Mr. Simorano. She learned her first year of engineering online with Mr. Pinio, who had to figure out how to teach students to use software meant for much more powerful computers than Chromebooks. He did it, and my daughter Brady loved it. Mr. Simorano was a master at parent communication. What I'm trying to tell you is that Worcester Public Schools has some amazing educators. And that list I just gave you doesn't include the wonderful teachers my children had before 2020 or that they've had since. These educators went above and beyond during the pandemic, and they did it with no contract. They did it with an MOA that contained an insulting raise, and they continue to do it today despite our differences. In fact, we as teachers did all these wonderful things, used new tools, new technology, and unprecedented teaching techniques for the benefits of our students and the families of Worcester. The teachers in the district revamped every single aspect of our teaching. The scope of what we accomplished is unfathomable to me right now. We did this with no additional compensation, no contract during extraordinary circumstances because we are professionals. And we continue to do this today. The pandemic expanded the scope of our jobs, teaching never returned to normal, things did not get easier when we returned to buildings, our workloads increased, we spent more time planning, differentiating, incorporating technology to embrace all learning styles, addressing student behavior and social-emotional needs. We are no longer just teachers. Now we are teachers, we are technology specialists, we are social-emotional monitors, and so, so much more. Looking back, I'm amazed at all that was accomplished, even without a promise of reward and despite years of underpayment. I'm amazed at the selflessness, the creativity, and the fortitude of Worcester Public School educators. You should be too.
Thank you.
Now is the time to pay them what they deserve and to compensate them for everything that they've done in the past and everything that they will do in the future. Worcester teachers deserve a fair contract now.
Say your name and say your residence.
Kevin O'Connor, resident of Worcester, and I've been teaching English in Worcester for 25 years, which reaches Middle, North, and Worcester Tech. My father was a teacher and administrator in Worcester for 35 years, Burncoat Junior, Chandler Junior, Forest Grove, South and North. His mother was a teacher in Worcester for 25 years, Belmont Street School. I had no illusions when I chose to teach for the Worcester Public Schools. In fact, my dad tried to dissuade me from entering the profession in general and from teaching in Worcester in particular. Kevin, he said, "Worcester doesn't value its educators." This was around 1995. I didn't understand then what I do now. I know this job is difficult. I know I'm not gonna get rich. I know people think it's easy and that we get the summers off, but also how hard we work, how much we give to this city and to our students. I know the sacrifices educators make, and what the committee's approach to our contract has left me angry, sad, and frankly embarrassed. Stop tweeting and talking about how much you value education. Do something about it. I tell my students in class constantly, "Action is character. Words can deceive." When the pandemic broke in 2020, educators were heroes. We saw your tweets, Instagram, Facebook posts telling how much you value educators. Now it's time to prove it. Teachers across this city did amazing things during that horrible time. We created a curriculum using tools we had never even heard of. We adapted to asynchronous learning without interfacing with students. We adapted to synchronous learning while students were at home. We adapted to hybrid learning while some students were in the building and some were still at home. We organized and participated in book drop-offs, Chromebook drop-offs, and hotspot drop-offs, all on our own time. To ensure students of this city could still learn, and we did all of this with an agreement. We agreed that the pandemic was extraordinary and required extraordinary efforts on our part. We agreed that this was extraordinary changes to our working conditions. We agreed that our contract was essentially be put on hold until we got through the pandemic. Well, we got through it, and we got through it thanks to heroic educators. Now it is time to negotiate a fair contract. Action is character, and educators vote.
Say your name and say your residence.
I'm Marissa Skeets. I'm from Dudley, Mass. Worcester, a teacher at Worcester Arts Magnet School, preschool. Grafton, Shrewsbury, Wachusett, the Boylestons, Milbury, Auburn, Paxton, and Lester all pay their teachers more than Worcester. Boston, a city that Worcester tries to compare itself to in scope and importance, pays their teachers over $20,000 more at the same experience level as Worcester teachers. There is a teacher shortage across the state, and Worcester is hoarding the second-largest collection of teachers in Massachusetts, all who are underpaid and maligned for the last 20 years. April is prime hiring season for any school district, and Worcester is set to lose a major chunk of its teachers to one, to the 1,000 open positions on school spring because you refuse to direct the superintendent to negotiate our contract in good faith. We hope you all start thinking about what you want the teaching population of Worcester to look like by the end of your terms. When you come to the realization of how badly you screwed up the city, I want you to remember these meanings full of educators wanting to remain in Worcester. We'd love to remain in Worcester, but many of us have job offers from surrounding towns making thousands of dollars more than we do. In many of these districts, educators get paid for covering other teachers' classes, earn better stipends for coaching and running clubs, and have a contract in place that cements our worth to a community that values educators. Thank you.
Andrew, Andrew, I think we have some people online. Oh, you wanna speak? Okay, anybody else wanna speak after her?
There's mine.
This will end, this will end around seven, so let's, two minutes down to everybody, okay?
Ellen Harity.
Yeah.
I live in the city of the city of Worcester. I'm a product of the Worcester Public School system myself. I am a Worcester Public School teacher, and I have been for 22 years. I'm a proud parent of four amazing Worcester Public School graduates as well. We, your Worcester Public School teachers, we're out in the cold. We're disappointed, unappreciated, undervalued, burnt out, and discouraged. You've demonstrated the support. You've demonstrated the support, the invaluable work done by our custodians settling their contract in a fair manner. The city was able to find a stipend of $1,300 for the police to wear a body cam because it was a change in their work. We found the funds for the CNAs and the LPNs. I'm having great difficulty understanding why you have not settled this teacher contract, consistently saying that there is not enough in the budget. Again, and again, you'll hear it tonight. What you fund is what you are showing you value. You have left us out in the cold. It is time to bargain in good faith. Thank you for your time.
My name is Andrew Willis. I'm a resident of Worcester and a special education teacher at Burnco High School. Yesterday, I had a student come up to me and ask if she could speak to all of you. This morning, she decided that she doesn't really read well and this is a lot of people. So she handed me this statement and she wanted me to read it to you. "I'm a student from Burnco High School and I'm agreeing with the teachers about them being without a contract. And they don't get paid enough for what they do for the school. And I don't find that fair because they buy things that are necessary and that the students need, and then they have to work multiple jobs because the money that the city gives them is not enough for their personal lives outside of school. And when teachers stay after school to help students for extra help, they don't get paid for that. And I find that unfair because they put in their time and effort to try to help the students and the school can't get new educators to work in the school because they get paid very little. Like per se, I do art and my art teachers need to buy art supplies for the classroom because the school district doesn't give a good balance of money for them to buy the art supplies. And this is not just art, this is multiple classes and after school. And coming from a student, it's sad because I feel the school district should understand and communicate more, not just making rules." Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor Petty, School Committee. My name is Sue Serato and I live in Worcester. I'm a proud member of the Massachusetts Nurses Association and one of the school nurses at South High Community School. My colleagues from Massachusetts Nurses Association and I are here tonight for our educators of the EAW. These are the educators that we work side by side, day in and day out, and we see firsthand the talent and compassion that they give to our city kids. And we just want to applaud them. The children of Worcester are our future. Our educators are leaving Worcester to work for other cities and towns for more money and better working conditions. They're also retiring earlier than they should be. That's got to stop. We have to move on from that. That won't do, I'm supposed to say. So the city of Worcester has exploited our educators' goodwill long enough and our children deserve better. We should be doing everything that we can to attract and retain new educators. The members of the EAW are asking for the means to just do that. Thank you.
Does your name and city of residence?
Sure, a little shorter than Sue is. Good evening, School Committee. My name is Tammy Hale and I live in Worcester. I am a parent of two children who graduated from Doherty and South High School, as well as a current student of May Street School. I have been a Worcester Public School nurse represented by the Massachusetts Nurses Association for 17 years. I am here tonight to voice my support of the teachers and to ask you to give them a fair contract that includes a wage increase. I have had the pleasure of working with so many wonderful, caring, and professional teachers throughout these years, which is one of the reasons I chose to have my children educated in the city. I have seen firsthand their commitment, their dedication, and ability to think out of the box at a moment's notice. During the pandemic, this amazing group of teachers had to throw away all that they knew about teaching in the traditional sense and recreate it all in a virtual forum. They had to contact parents weekly, meet the goals and benchmarks set forth by DESI, have cameras on at all times while teaching, which opened their personal lives to the public with no stipend. Ensure students had the tools and the supplies needed to access the curriculum and somehow keep 22, sometimes more, students engaged in learning through a computer screen. All of this was a significant change to their working conditions. Now teachers are dealing with the aftermath of the pandemic. There are lasting effects from it and being in the classroom presents even more of a challenge due to it. Every day, I continue to be amazed at what these teachers do for the students of the Worcester Public School and I am incredibly proud to work with them. The sad thing is that the group of teachers you have sitting here tonight is getting smaller. You are losing teachers and need to do something about it now to not only retain the ones you have, but to attract new teachers. We all talk about how important a solid education foundation is for a student's success, while behind me stands that solid educational foundation. It's the teachers of the Worcester Public School. We all talk about investing in our future and how important it is for a student's success. Well, behind me stands that investment, the teachers of the Worcester Public Schools. And the students are the fruits of that investment. The teachers deserve to be compensated for all that they bring to the Worcester Public Schools. Committee member Tracy Novick said budgets are moral documents. We, what we fund is what we value. So now is the time for you to show us that you actually mean what you say. Help my son and all of the students in the Worcester Public School succeed by investing in the teachers and giving them a fair contract that includes a wage increase.
Hi, I know I already spoke, but we have a group of students and I know that this is like not how things go, but could we return to public comment and allow them to present? Would that be okay with the committee? Is that okay with the committee? Okay.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on.
Oh, that's okay. I just see them and I'm told that they've been waiting and I appreciate that they're here and especially what they're here for. So I want to hear it. And I ask my colleagues to please just keep it down so that they can get through this. It's, we all know how nerve-wracking it is to speak in this, in front of this many people.
Okay, we have the, we have the considered presentation of the Gorge School Student Council on Earth Day Water Bottle Project aimed at reducing plastic, what's that? At the schools. Want to introduce everybody or?
Yes. Hi. I'm Mrs. Seles from Goddard School and I'd like to present to you the members of our student council. They are all sixth graders and since January, they've been volunteering hours and hours of their time before school, their recesses, lunches, lots of time to work on projects that mean a lot to them. So I'm going to turn over the mic to the student council.
My name is Kaylani. I'm the president of student council.
And my name is Bella. I am the vice president of student council.
We would like to ask for your assistance with the Earth Day project on plastic bottles wasted at our school. Following is our video presentation created to explain our project. Thank you for listening to the presentation.
Okay, well, we need to show them the project's person. Andrew? They have something for the superintendent and for the mayor.
Perfect. Nice job, everyone.
And we would like to present some letters to this, the school committee.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, EAW. Thank you, School Committee. Thank you Superintendent Manjares and Mayor Petty for the time.
All set? Great job. You can go out the door right here if you want.
Oh, that way?
Yeah, go ahead. Does your name say your residence and you have two minutes?
Hello, good evening. My name is Kristi Santos. I'm an instructional coach at Burnco Elementary and I reside in Holden, Massachusetts. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the CKLA Amplify pilot that we had at my school. I participated in common planning sessions with our grade two teachers and observed multiple CKLA lessons. At first, I witnessed an increase in engagement and enthusiasm for reading and writing. On day two of the pilot, students were proudly acting out one of the stories from their knowledge block. As time went on, I saw the stamina of students grow, especially in their approach to writing tasks. At the end of March, after just four weeks of the pilot, our school took the standardized STAR reading assessment as part of routine progress monitoring. I analyzed the data in grades first through six, focusing on the average scaled score for each classroom. Grades one through six classrooms increased their average scaled score anywhere between 20 and 54 points. The grade two data represented an immediate outlier for our school. These classrooms increased their average scaled score by 95 and 85 points. In addition, 50% of the students in grade two nearly doubled their student growth percentile in three months. The only difference in grade two was the use of the CKLA program. As a coach, I also explored every grade level through their demo site. I want to highlight how developmentally appropriate it is for all grades. A focus on spelling, decoding, and fluency continues through grades three through six, which is often a missing piece in our curriculums and it is essential for student reading success. Writing within each unit has a stronger focus on narrative writing, which has been an area of concern for our district according to recent MCAS data. We are at a major shift in education, away from differentiating instruction because it often turns out to be different instruction and that is not equitable for our students. CKLA models a UDL approach providing scaffolding to break down grade level reading and writing tasks into manageable parts for all students. After witnessing the impact and success for our grade two students, it feels like it would be a disservice to continue using an ineffective curriculum for another year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello. My name is Megan Ty and I'm a resident of Worcester. Good evening, Worcester School Committee. My name, I'm Megan and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Woodland Academy. To give you a quick background on my classroom, 17 out of 80 or 85% of my students are English language learners. Three of those students are brand-new to the country as of this year. I also have five out of 20 of my students who have IEPs in my room. I was one of the teachers who was selected to participate in piloting CKLA during the third quarter, where I was able to coach teach through a poetry unit with my English as a second language teacher and my student teacher from Clark University. The unit featured various whole and adapted poems from poets of diverse backgrounds such as Langston Hughes. I see three key strengths that I'd like to communicate to you today. First, this program effortlessly weaves reading and writing instruction together. In my prior years of teaching in Worcester, teaching reading and writing happened in different blocks during the day and they often were not connected. Throughout the CKLA units, students read to build knowledge around a thematic unit, for example, geology, and are tasked to use their understanding of the concepts learned to then write about them in various ways. This writing looks like responding to comprehension questions based on the text or having the students create a pamphlet on tsunamis. Next, the thematic nature of this knowledge-based curriculum allows for students to build a network of schema around one topic. For example, my students are currently in our unit on geology and are building background knowledge around early theories of continental drift. They are constantly being exposed to vocabulary that builds on itself but also repeats throughout the unit. I believe that this method of instruction is effective for our English language learners. All students are engaging with vocabulary words within a particular theme that they will use throughout the reading and writing block and ideally absorb them to use through their own vocabulary. Finally, this program is rigorous. It exposes students to grade-level text that increases in complexity throughout the year. This pushes our students towards comprehending grade-level text that's appropriate for the development and growth as learners. CKLA's rigor challenges students to improve their stamina and requires a high level of critical thinking and comprehension. As a district, we need to work to develop scaffolds and supports for students who need them to access parts of the curriculum, but this is something that we've always done. I implore you to ask questions tonight and seek answers. You've been put in charge of voting on something that will directly affect the students and the teachers of Worcester. Thank you for my time. I've been given to share my perspective.
Good evening. My name is Robert Harden, resident here at Worcester. First, I would like to thank the teachers, staff, administrators from the Worcester School System. I have two children here in town and they have succeeded so well with all their help. My comment tonight is in regards to the dual-language program here at Worcester. My oldest daughter, she's a junior at Burnco High and she is a junior, of course. Dual-language students met this week with a representative from the school committee about the curriculum for next year, which there doesn't seem to be a plan for them yet. They've been in the program for 12 years, worked really hard, and at this point, as they're in their fourth term for the year and they're looking at their senior years next year, they, there needs to be a plan in place for them so that they can do their AP classes they want to sign up for and the dual-language programs. One program my daughter was really looking forward to was the medical translator program. She has intention of going to medical school one day. So I would like to know what the plan is for the students to be able to.
I don't know why that's doing that. Are those microphones on there or? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to know if there's a plan in place so that before the summer comes along, they know what's going to happen next year for their classes. I know some plans were to have classes at Quincy-Gibbons College or have college professors come to the students. But uncertainty shouldn't be at this point for classes that they've been in for 12 years. I mean, we just opened the new dual-language school on Grafton Street, which is great because I know it's been a very successful program. So that's what I'm hoping to find out tonight, if that can be a discussion.
If it's not, we can, if you have a few minutes, you can leave your phone number, we can call you or, I'm not sure, it's not on the agenda tonight, so, but we'll have a discussion with no question. If you want to hang around, you are welcome. But we'll have a discussion with no question. If you want to hang around, you are welcome. It's not after we have this. The agenda will probably move pretty quickly, so...
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have two people online. Andrew, can we put them on? We have Jessica.
Hi. My name is Jessica Ahutske. I am a focused instructional coach. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the CKLA curriculum that my school piloted with our kindergarten team. We had a very positive experience with the program, using the program with our diverse learners. The skills component, which includes explicit phonics and foundational skill instruction, provides students with ample opportunities to practice and apply their knowledge. The skills component for phonics is also systematic and explicit, which, as noted by the National Panel of Reading Report and many others, is a well-established research-based way to teach students how to read. When asking kindergarten students what they like about learning during the skills block, they remarked sounding out and writing words is my favorite. Students are actively engaged during practice time and are excited to be reading. During one particular lesson, students gained confidence when independently reading CVC or consonant-vowel consonant phrases. Supports for students include multimodal instruction, another well-established evidence-based practice. When observing a skills lesson in my school, students independently made the motions for the vowel sounds, showing that they internalized the multimodal move and it is helping all learners to retain the letter-sound correspondence. During the rigorous knowledge component, themed units allowed all learners to build their knowledge to a deeper level. Ample discussion and collaboration opportunities are built into the program. Students were able to demonstrate their understanding in a developmentally appropriate manner and consistently showed understanding of vocabulary words. Specifically, students learned about two role models in history, Ray Charles and Helen Keller, during the five-senses unit where they made real-world connections and applications. The sense of urgency within our school to increase student success in reading is palpable. This sense of urgency is echoed by teachers who want research-based materials and training in order to best support our learners. Both myself and my kindergarten teachers believe that CKLA will best support our students through the evidence-based materials and practices it includes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And do we have another speaker, Andrew? Who's that?
Ms. Lavoy, I think. Yes, hi. Hi, my name is Carissa Lavoy. I am a resident of Worcester. I teach second grade at Burnco Elementary School, and I'm here today to talk about my experience piloting the CKLA curriculum. I have eighteen students in my classroom, eight who are multilingual learners and two who are on IEPs. One of the things I have noticed the most about the program is that it's comprehensive. It includes systematic instruction in writing, grammar, phonics, reading comprehension, speaking, and listening. Having a curriculum that has everything at my fingertips allows me more time to focus on the quality of my instruction and work with students who need more support. The program is also equitable. All students are receiving the same material and I scaffold it based on what they need. The students really enjoy reading the same story together, and I have seen this increase their engagement and excitement. Another positive about the program is the read-aloud topics that students are exposed to. They are learning about topics such as Civil War, Westward expansion, ancient Greek civilization, tall tales, fairy tales, immigration, and many more. These topics are engaging and empowering. I find students really enjoy them and have great conversation as we read. These topics also introduce them to a vast vocabulary that I find them understanding and using appropriately. I could say a lot about how much I love this program, but the data will speak for itself. In January of this year, I had three out of eighteen students reading on grade level. As of right now, after eight weeks of teaching CKLA, I now have eight students on grade level and three who are approaching. Five of those students are multilingual learners and two of them are on IEPs. These students did not just make a few levels of growth, most of them made five or six. In addition, on the most recent STAR assessment, one hundred percent of my students made progress and fifty percent of my students nearly doubled their student growth percentile. This program has pushed me to push my students academically, and they are making strides I never thought possible in such a short amount of time. It has been refreshing to finally have a program that works for all of my students, and I am excited to see the progress that would be made in a full year if the program is approved for the district. Thank you again for allowing me to share.
Thank you. We have another speaker, Patricia?
Can you hear me?
Am I missing something?
Can you hear me?
Okay, Patri... oh, we missed somebody. I see what's saying. Oh, okay. We'll go back to Mrs. Tracy. Patricia, go ahead. Did your names say your residence?
Hello. Yeah, my name is Pat Paul. I'm a resident of sixty-five Commodore Road, and I wish to add comments regarding the potential adoption of the new ELA curriculum for Worcester Public Schools. I'm a former classroom teacher and a current professor of literacy education at the University of Massachusetts in Boston, and I'm passionate about all children's right to socially just, high expectations literacy education. Through my work, I've closely followed the current national conversation on literacy education, and as a resident of the city, I have an interest in how this is impacting the decision to seek a new curriculum here in Worcester. For these reasons, I appreciated the Worcester Public Schools' presentation about the pilot of two English language arts curricula and the proposal to adopt one of them, Core Knowledge Language Arts, or CKLA, at Monday's meeting of the Teaching, Learning, and Studies Support Subcommittee. I found the comments and questions posed by the three school committee members in attendance to be on target, both in supporting the need for change and ensuring that all considerations were heard before such a change was adopted. From my perspective, the process Worcester Public Schools followed of choosing from curriculum endorsed by an organization known as EdReports is fairly consistent with many districts nationally. The choice of the CKLA as a curriculum that will offer more stringent skill instructions is also in keeping with national conversation on the need to better serve our students at early levels of schooling and echoes the call from our Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed for a core literacy block to be included in high-quality classroom environments. As a teacher educator, my pre-service teachers echo the comments shared by the Worcester Public School teachers who piloted the CKLA. They see curriculum that will assist them in developing their own knowledge of skills needed for early reading and writing. That said, our Mass DESI also called for culturally responsive and anti-racist curriculum as two equally important elements of high-quality preschool and elementary classrooms. I did notice at the TLSS meeting, there was a discussion about any aspects of CKLA that were less than positive, and it was mentioned that this curriculum was missing some elements of this latter content. So in relation to this discussion, my comment is, the strong skills curricula endorsed by Ed Reports is most likely that, strong skills, but I'm not sure that there is curriculum among any endorsed by Ed Reports that also attends to those two additional elements. So my understanding is that the Worcester Public Schools administration and school committee are equally committed to curriculum that is inclusive and inviting for the racially diverse students in our schools. And I noted a comment that the proposers of CKLA are aware of the need to attend a culturally responsive instruction. But because it wasn't mentioned in the proposal itself, I am hoping that there be a clear plan for that instruction alongside the implementation of the new ELA curriculum. I believe there is a great opportunity for Worcester Public Schools to put strong ELA curriculum in place while also giving equal priority to culturally responsive and racially just instruction. I urge the school committee to ensure that the new ELA curriculum is accompanied by a clear plan for instruction and professional development that assures high-quality skills instruction along with culturally irrelevant and racially just practices in all classrooms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Tracy's next.
Good evening, school committee members. I am speaking on behalf of the CKLA curriculum. My name is Erin Tracy and I'm a second-grade teacher at Woodland Academy. I have eighteen children in my class, twelve of which are multilingual learners. Before I begin to share my experience with the curriculum in the classroom, I think it's also important to share that I am also a part of the multilingual department's ESL co-teaching pilot. The CKLA curriculum is divided into two strands, the knowledge strand, which is read-alouds and writing about reading, and the skills strand, which is phonics and spelling. The majority of the knowledge strand lessons that my class received were taught by myself and the ESL teacher in my room using co-teaching models. During the pilot, I noticed that my students have been much more engaged in read-alouds and write about them afterwards. Writing has been the largest area of growth for my students, and this is due to the knowledge strand as well as the explicit phonics and spelling instruction that they have received in the skills strand. In the skills strand, the students engage in phonics, spelling, reading, and writing activities in which they apply the skills that they have learned. Since beginning these lessons, I have observed that my students are utilizing the spelling patterns that they have learned about when decoding and encoding words. Assessments show that they have acquired a large number of Tier Two and Three vocabulary words and have retained the information from the knowledge and skills units. We have seen an increase in their risk-taking when participating in whole-group conversations and have noticed that they are producing responses that indicate higher-order thinking. One concern I had when beginning this pilot was the lack of time for small-group instruction and guided reading. Although this curriculum doesn't have centers or guided reading built into it, there are opportunities in both strands to pull small groups for intervention and extension activities. Another concern I initially had was that it would take up two hours of the day, and I was very worried that it would be too taxing on my kids. I have been pleasantly surprised with the number of opportunities through both the skills and knowledge strands for students to engage in whole-body activities that keep them engaged, learning, and moving. Additionally, I have noticed that they are doing a much better job of working collaboratively thanks to the large number of opportunities to engage in turn-in talks as well as partner and group work. After piloting three knowledge units and two skills units over the last eight weeks, overall, I would say that the CKLA curriculum has been very successful in my classroom, and my students and I have enjoyed it greatly. Thank you again for taking the time to hear about my experience with the curriculum. Have a great night.
Thank you. We have, is it Kristen, one more speaker online anyways?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very nice. I apologize. I just finished back. My name is Kristen Ronan. I am a resident of North Providence, Rhode Island, and have been an employee, I am a school psychologist for Worcester Public Schools for the past seven years, five, seven years. The reason I'm calling is I live ten minutes away from the Providence School District, a district that I could very well work for. However, currently, the Providence School District is under state leadership due to underfunding, lack of pay for their educators, and that is why I don't work there. I drive forty-five minutes to Worcester every day to work in an urban school district where I thought the educators were going to be paid appropriately. Currently, the educators need a new contract. We need a good pay. If not, the school psychologists, the IAs, the teachers will be leaving to find other districts, just as I, as a Rhode Island resident, have left my hometown, my home state, to go and fight a better living, a better environment, a better schooling system. I don't want to see more educators leave this Worcester. I love Worcester. I want to move closer to Worcester. However, I can't see that feasible if we will not provide a living wage to our educators. We need a new contract, or educators, staff, support staff will leave. Please help the Worcester educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll wrap up this portion of the... are everybody all set? Okay. Well, thank you for coming out. Appreciate... do you want to say something? You can come around if you want, and we'll wrap it up with you. Did your names say your residence?
Angela Carmona, Worcester, Massachusetts. Born and raised. Twenty years teaching for Worcester Public Schools.
Thank you.
So I grew up in every neighborhood. I'm the oldest of seven children. I would say that I know Worcester pretty well. Right now, I work in two, a few schools, big schools, and I see what I was born here with, a lot of students trying to learn a new language. Well, I think, I hear a lot of talk about curriculum tonight, but I'm thinking, maybe... Well, I'll even tell you how I became a teacher. How it was is, they invited me through high school to come in and work in a summer program for Union Hill School, and I loved children, and so I decided to be a teacher. The kids here need to see what it's like and be part of that experience. I'm thinking, I keep hearing people talk about curriculum, but being in a classroom, we actually just need people. So maybe you could rethink the plan, like shuttle bus in kids from high school or college and bring them in to help us do these reading groups. Like lots of, I just heard a lack of small groups, like in the curriculum. We need people in our classroom to support us. And we're trying to do a lot, like I walk into a classroom, there's a bunch, I can't tell you how many headphones break. We can't just have them at the beginning of the year. We need check-in supplies, like multiple times a year. My kids, I'm like, guys, hold on, we're getting a teacher. You want to, can you, you want to color right now? Oh, yes, we need this break because it's not enriching enough. The programs are starting to become so rigorous that they're like, please, bring us something else to do. And when that happens, they're like, Ms. Um, I can't say many... Well, I did already. Ms. Carmona, we don't, we don't have coloring supplies. So they, nobody could color in that class. I went to... But that, that's not the first time that happened last year, too. So we need, if you could please do supply check-ins with us, like do... Oh, no, didn't have tons of supplies today. I go to about thirty-two classes a week. I think you should find out from us more, like us in the trenches, what's going on, what do we need? We need, we don't have the supplies we need. Oh, please, we need those headphones. The kids can't listen to their stories. I mean, and like, I don't know all the levels, but I worked at the elementary level. And I did well working within a class, but we met every day. Every student needs to read every day. They need to be in small groups. You need veteran teachers that know how to do it, and you are losing the veteran teachers. I'm here because I was born here, and I love these students. My favorite part of the day is greeting the students in the morning. And that's, that's what I'm here to do. And I don't know, I just think, like, if there was a push on, like, how could kids see, build relationships and see people that look like them? That's how, because you need to bring people that are here to help us, you know? Oh, I guess, so, yeah, there was a lot of talk about curriculum, but maybe it's rethinking how, how it's being laid out, you know, what works. Like, why are we changing it again?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, I think that most of everybody good? Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight. Can someone just remove the sign that's pasted to the banner? It's stuck there. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go off the meeting.
Mr. Chair, just point of procedure, we didn't actually refer the Goddard student petition to FNO.
Okay, sure. We'll send that to finance. Are those in favor? Propose so ordered. I report the superintendent, from here to anywhere, to get it innovating for the future. Madam Superintendent? Did I miss something? No.
So as the team is coming up, I want to thank them again for their pulling, for their commitment to where we're taking Worcester Public Schools. Look forward to working with our educators to make this happen collectively. We're gonna pull the presentation up. So it's, I think it was a little bit over a month ago, we presented to you what the future of schooling can look like or may look like as we prepare for the future of what the potential workforce will look like. And in that, we shared with you ChatGPT and other artificial intelligence programming that really will shift the way the future is for our children, for our classroom educators, for our principals, for the workforce. So tonight, we're gonna take it to the next level where we will be talking about a bit more concrete around this. I want to make sure the team is ready.
Can everybody introduce themselves too when you speak?
Yes, when you, when you speak, if you'll just introduce yourself so that, so they can hear your voice together, right? But I'll quickly go over, you'll hear from our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Marie Morris. You'll hear from Dr. Sarah Kiriassis, Director of Educational Technology and Digital Learning, Mr. Will Foley, our Executive Director of the Burnco Quadrant, and Dr. Marco Andrade, Director of Research and Accountability. Mr. Will Foley, our Executive Director of the Burnco Quadrant, and Dr. Marco Andrade, Director of Research and Accountability. Next slide, we'll go over the objectives. So tonight, there are two big objectives for the committee. First is to learn about the vision of a learner. Now, this is a renaming of what, um, what was previously being called our Portrait of a Graduate. We've shifted, shifted that naming a little bit. We'll get to why that is and what are the components of it and how we came about even coming to this idea of a vision of a learner. Um, and then you'll also, um, get in some input or you'll start to understand how we will begin. So I want to really emphasize that. Begin our shift towards future-ready schools. This is not something we're jumping into all feet in, um, starting it for next year. We're going to kind of ease into this because this is a shift. And as we heard, our educators have experienced quite a few shifts in the last few years. Nationally, most, um, most intentionally focused on Worcester here, want to do this with our teachers and our educators, not to them. As promised, I will always bring the superintendent goals back to you. So the work of, um, Vision of a Learner, it is the, it goes with goal number one, the district goal, and specifically the evidence of Portrait of a Graduate. So we're changing the language. It's no longer Portrait of a Graduate. It's Vision of a Learner and tonight you're going to hear a little bit about the implementation plan that we have moving forward. As you're listening, please gather just input and ideas around, um, how we can further improve this, how we communicate this, how we message it, um, so that helps to guide us. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris.
Thank you. Through the chair, we're delighted to be here tonight. We're gonna talk about a very exciting topic. With me tonight is Dr. Sarah Kiriassis, Executive Director, Will Foley, and Dr. Marco Andrade. I sometimes say his last name wrong, but I know I got it right tonight. So we are really excited about this topic. We've done a tremendous amount of work. This, thanks to this team, they've led some impressive work. So, um, I'm gonna open up for us and talk to you a little about grounding the work in an instructional framework. So this is our instructional framework. It's in draft form. We're still working through it with our, with our different task forces. But you will see that this is basically a set of common understandings, practices and beliefs that ground and define instruction across that district. You will see the dispositions of the vision of a learner on the outside. And these are major influencers on how we work and how we learn. These are big picture drivers and you, they are very important to our overall instructional design. Educators build activities around these dispositions and will improve outcomes for our students. On the inner circle, you see Plan, Instruct, Assess and Adapt. And these are, um, important pieces and steps teachers take in creating a lesson. As you all know, a lesson doesn't start the day the teacher stands in front of the class. There's pre-work that's done, tremendous amount of planning, ensuring the lesson is aligned. Instruction is filled with different types of pedagogy depending upon the topic, the content, the students' needs. And there's always assessment, were we effective? Did we meet our goals? What else should we do? And that's where we get into our adaptive role, where we begin to rethink, reflect on our work. Inside of the circle, you're gonna see four light blue circles and these are four things that we've been working on for many years. Effective use of time. It doesn't mean that the teacher is demanding and, and working in front of students the entire time. We're hoping to look for engagement, student discussion, small groups, lots of different ways teachers can facilitate the lesson and not expect the teachers must direct every minute of the lesson. We want our students to have agency and direct their own learning. Targeted learning goals. We want to make sure what we, what we learn is aligned with what our students are supposed to be learning. So it's very important for students to understand how to be successful and that's where targeted learning goals come in. Teachers are masterful at formative assessment, constantly checking in in many ways to make sure they are giving students what they need. Formative assessment is a key piece to ensuring that instruction is relevant and appropriate. And depth of knowledge, you've heard a little bit this evening about rigor and deep and high expectations for student learning. We want to ensure that every lesson provides the opportunity for students to, to learn at their highest level. And my favorite part here is the, the small but important heart in the center. What we have learned more than anything is you can plan, you can create the best lesson, but if the environment for learning is not built on relationships, trust, caring and belonging and inclusiveness, you sometimes don't get the results of those great lessons. So it is important and essential that as we grow our understanding of our instructional framework, we start with the heart. As we know, true excellence cannot be achieved without outstanding relationships and student-centered learning. So we can go to the next slide. You're gonna see this one a lot. Um, we talked about it before in a meeting and it was caring for the present, enabling the future. So, um, one of the things that you see is the gentleman or the lady or the, uh, I'm sorry, the person on a tag rope and they're balancing, they're trying to balance between caring for the present or enabling the future. And I know you've seen this slide before. But we thought, rather than provide for you a lot of slides about what the vision of a learner potentially could be, we decided to, um, do something that we hope our students will be able to do, to demonstrate knowledge and learning in multiple ways. So we've created a quick video to demonstrate for you what we think our journey moving forward will look like. So let's see what's ahead. Is it audio? Can you turn it?
Wait, I did what you said. It's in the Google site, uh, Google.
Next.
All right, I'm Will Foley, Executive Director of Schools for the Burnco Quadrant. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the vision of a learner. Before I get into the, this draft version of the vision of a learner that we are currently working from, I'll talk a little bit about how we have gotten to this point. So a number of years ago, recognizing that we needed to have a single Portrait of the Graduate for the Worcester Public Schools, a group of folks began to work on the creation of this, of the document that you see on the screen. Before that, it used to be that each school typically as a part of their NEASC accreditation process would develop their own mission and vision statement. And it would be revisited every ten years or so, um, as a part of that decennial visit process. But in thinking about it, it really didn't make a lot of sense for each of the comprehensive high schools and the technical school too, to have their own mission and vision. We're one city, we are a, um, growing into a school system as opposed to a system of schools. So the work began to create a single, what at that time was called Portrait of the Graduate. And it is, Portrait of the Graduate is the term that NEASC does use. But this isn't about NEASC. This is about the Worcester Public Schools. So the Portrait of the Graduate is a promise to our community about what they can expect from our graduates when they finish high school and beyond. It's also the umbrella under which all of the work that we do, pre-K through post-grade twelve for those students who stay with us, um, will be doing, all the curriculum, all the activities, everything we do sits underneath that umbrella of the vision of the gr- of what we are now calling our vision of the learner. So our process this year was to take a very careful look at the work that had taken place before. And a lot of very, very good work had been done. Many stakeholder groups were engaged, um, including students, community, staff. Uh, small groups, uh, um, took place, a lot, a lot of work happened. So we reviewed that work and then began to take a, a critical examination of, um, where we needed to go because the work that took place was stalled as a result of the pandemic. And we all know that returning from the pandemic, school looks different, work looks different. And we needed to make sure that the vision of the learner that we created is current and represents the skills that our students need post-pandemic as they enter into the world of work. The skills that, that our community needs for our students to have. So we began a process of examining the work that was done, as I had said, as I said, taking it to our principals, district leaders, students through things like the Teacher Advisory Council, student, superintendent, student advisory council, site councils, um, working at the cabinet level, district level, and everyone sort of collaborating around what is it that our students need to know and be able to do when they graduate from high school? Or are finished with the Worcester Public Schools is really probably a more fair way to say it. So here are the five primary skills, as we're referring to them, that we feel as though are integral for our students to have post-high school. Problem solver, curious learner, empowered individual, effective communicator and engaged citizen. And for each of these skills, we've developed a set of dispositions that identify more specifically what those skills look like. The first of them is problem solver. Problem solvers will be scholars who are methodical in their approach to overcoming obstacles and who reflect on what they learn from their experience to apply it to new situations. Which, you can see that it's how we have identified those, but that sort of encapsulates what we see a problem solver as. We see curious learner as a scholar who finds joy in learning more about themselves and the world around them. They actively, they're, they're individuals who actively seek opportunities to discover, explore and to better understand their interests while reflecting on what they learn for growth, uh, learn for growth and self-improvement. I'll turn it over now to Dr. Andrade.
Thank you, welcome. Next slide.
For empowered individuals, we, when we think about empowered individuals, uh, we envision scholars who feel confident in their ability to navigate a complex world while achieving their goals. They possess the skills to approach life's challenging moments in a healthy manner and have the self-awareness to learn from these experiences in a way that better prepares them for the next challenge. When we envision effective communicators, we see scholars who convey their ideas in a clear manner to a variety of audiences across settings. They engage in productive dialogue with others, potentially with different points of view towards a resolution or common goal. And when we envision our engaged citizens, we see scholars who participate in the democratic process and are engaged in the betterment of their communities. They are informed and act on that information to advocate for themselves and others of different, different social, cultural and linguistic backgrounds.
So now that we've reviewed, reviewed our vision of a learner, competencies and dispositions, we're gonna talk a little bit about the beginning stages of our implementation plan, which we're calling the Spark Plan. The district is doing some work around, um, be the spark that ignites students' passions and strengths and interests. So we, um, use that to name our plan. As you heard in the first presentation, The Future of Schools, we talked about in education, there, there's several buckets of things that need to start changing to meet the skills and dispositions of vision of a learner. Instruction and assessment, skills and knowledge, and learning space and tools. And in the Spark Plan, we're gonna start to take a look and work with educators and administrators and students and families and community members on how we can start to look at changing some of these. So the initial stages of our Spark Plan come in two components. They're very exciting. And, um, the first one is reimagining a school and the second one is Spark Teachers and I'm gonna give you a little bit of information about each of those. So, uh, the superintendent has designated Wildweakest Elementary School to be the school that we're going to work with the staff on reimagining. I have the honor of being the Ed Tech Director. Sorry. And also, um, next year's principal for this school. We're going to lead a school through redesigning and planning and working together towards all of these things that you see on the screen. As, um, Dr. Manada said, we are going to be working with the staff together to reimagine the school as well as with the Ed Tech Department and other educators across the district. As far as I've learned from my research, I haven't seen a plan like this. Um, so we're really excited to see how this works and, um, engage the families and the students in this work. Some of the things we're gonna be looking at are advanced technology, project-based learning, uh, hands-on portfolios and assessments, student leadership through student and parent teacher conferences, um, and working on those skills and dispositions of the vision of a learner at an elementary level. The second part of the Spark Plan is sparking joy and innovation throughout the district um, through a new program called Spark Teachers. And these are twenty-four teachers in the first year throughout, um, each, uh, twenty-four total for the district, but throughout evenly, evenly divided through quadrants and grade levels on teachers that want to be in this work with us early on in, in their schools. They will be joining in professional development and learning and connecting with the teachers at Wildweakest. We're gonna be looking at, again, the vision of a learner, blended learning, technology integration, and again sparking joy, um, being a place for social, emotional support and being model classrooms in their schools. And this is the first stages of our implementation plan and we, um, have a plan to grow this year over year. And we hope that, um, as you can see in the video, where we're done reimagining what we want school to look like, we're starting to do the work and to reimagine it with our staff and our students and to, and to really dig in and get going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, back to Dr. Manadas.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, so, so thank you, team. Um, again, we, we don't, we, we haven't found a district that's doing this. We want to do this with our teachers. We're gonna go slow to go fast. Do you want, our Spark Teachers will be applying for this. They have to show an interest. We will be compensating them appropriately um, because we are going to ask them to do above and beyond. But this gives us the opportunity with Wildweakest, who, um, Dr. Kiriassis has already started meeting with that staff. Um, I believe, have we already informed the families or were, I think we have, um, yes, yes. And, um, to just to let them know, nothing's changing aside from next year's a learning year. Next year is when we, the staff starts learning about how to do this so that we start implementing the following year. And the Spark Teachers are doing that as well. So we do it, we learn from it. Before, we take it really large throughout a very large district, um, and we, we use this as almost a beta. Now, when you think about what children can and should be able to do, what our teachers are asking for, what our paras are asking for, they are asking for that opportunity to be creative, to be, um, seen as the professionals that we know that they are and we create- And we create that space for them. So we're looking forward to this work and what this will do for our scholars throughout the district, for educators, to reignite them and spark them. It's been a, a difficult few years for them, we know that. And, and really prepare our children to be ready for the future linguistically. Their, their linguistic knowledge, their content knowledge, the way that they work with people, all of that, so that no matter what career they choose to go into, they are the highlight of their workforce. So thank you, team, for that. And we open it up to questions for you, committee.
Member McCullough, member Kamara.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I don't know that I have very many questions. I think probably some of my colleagues do, so I won't take up too much time. I just wanted to say thank you, as far as the presentation goes, for having sat through a lot of the previous Portrait of a Graduate work, to see it taking shape as more of a vision of a learner and really encompassing what that means as that individual moves forward, not only throughout our school system, but what it means for them in the future, I think is very important because that's one of the comments and concerns I've heard, certainly in the community and from some people that are in higher ed locally, is the preparation of students as they're getting out into whether it's secondary, higher education, or getting ready for the workforce. And, you know, certainly that's not a problem specific to Worcester, but just a general overall conversation. And certainly from being, you know, out in the workforce in the business world, when you look at things like problem solver, curious learner, empowered individual, and effective communicator, and engaged citizen, those are qualities that most places are looking for now because they're looking for the total package when they're hiring places. You know, they want the specific skill set for the employment, but they're looking for the quality in the employee as well. So I appreciate that. I am excited to learn more about the Spark School. I've had some conversations with educators in the district that have had some of the meetings and information on it. I think that being able to utilize a space that we currently have and build opportunities for all of our students throughout the district as we move forward, especially when we're talking about technology, is huge. And being proactive with technology as opposed to reactive, the conversations that we've had about ChatGPT and how do we use those as learning tools as opposed to learning challenges, are incredible opportunities, and there are so many ways that that can be done. Thank you to the original presentation we got because then I started doing a lot more research myself and have found it very eye-opening. And again, I, I look forward to hearing more about the Spark Plan as far as it ties into the vision of a learner. But as far as the vision of a learner goes, I'm excited to be a part of this process and hearing more about it and how it's evolved from where we were as a Portrait of a Graduate. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Kamara.
Thank you. Thank you to the chair. I also want to say thank you for this presentation and the direction in which this Portrait of the Graduate has taken place. I have a question, but I just wanted to clarify one thing. So it appears that the Spark Plan, kind of like it's the method, right, that we're going to use, almost like the medicine we're going to use, to infuse in the outcome, for the outcome, which is the vision of the learner. Is that what I'm getting here? This is the plan that is, okay, awesome. My other question is pertaining to, and it's just like for some clarifying questions, pertaining to dynamic portfolio assessments. I just wanted to understand that part of it. Is this like for, is this being done by the students? Yeah.
Through the chair, yes. That's our hope, that's something that we want to explore. Actually, the three of us are on a two-day conference talking about performance assessments at all grade levels. And so portfolios is something that we want to explore and how you can start that at a young age. So by the time you are in middle and high school, you can successfully defend or present artifacts that you've selected, evidence you've selected to meet the standards or the vision of a learner, particularly to a, like our students did earlier today, to an audience and be able to defend that work and be proud of that work. And so we want to start exploring that at an early age.
I think that is amazing. I think this is amazing. I think that, you know, this is, what's it, a concrete plan. I like the fact that we have immersive, project-based learning, advanced technology, and then tie into this dynamic portfolio. And at the end here, when we talk about future-ready, this is how you get people future-ready. And so I'm interested to be in a part of this, you know, the things that we're doing in our district where that we're finding other ways to assess students by skills and not just by quantitative measure, which we all know some people may not do well in, but that does not mean that they aren't brilliant. And we have some brilliant, creative kids in our district. And I would also be interested to see how you will integrate this assessment, portfolio assessment, that, that is mirroring what the, the, the technology world now consists of. Like, I don't know, I have seen some like portfolio where like students create their own website and then they store all their things there, whatever. But I, I, I'm just interested to look at all the things that you and your team and this entire district will, would do because this is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Novick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before I, I ask any further questions or offer any remarks, could I just, through the chair, ask for a clarification? There's a couple of times where it was said that this was a draft, but then at the end, we are already moving into implementation. So before I offer comments that are maybe not actually timely, can we get some clarification on, on what it, which it is, please?
Madam Superintendent.
Yes, through the chair. Great question. The draft portion is specifically around the vision of the learner, the competency, some of that language. We still, even today, we had the district leadership together, and there are some terms that we're still kind of kicking around, and we're going to finalize that. And for then the implement, so the vision of the learner really then drives everything, right? So once we finalize that, the, the implementation side of it, which is having teachers throughout our district being trained and the work at Well Weakest, that gets framed by the vision of a learner.
Okay. The reason I ask this is there hasn't actually ever been a point at which the school committee could weigh in on this work. We, when we were describing it as Portrait of a Graduate, we kept sort of having these presentations in which we were told that there was going to be more and more and more, and then eventually it was going to come back to the school committee for a vote, which I would note, I would argue would be appropriate since effectively what we're doing is setting a goal, right? Goal-setting is under the purview of the school committee. So in light of that, let me offer a few reflections, if that would be considered appropriate on, on what is here. I, I appreciate the move from Portrait of a Graduate to the, the notion of the vision. I'm uncomfortable with talking about learners for the same reason I'm uncomfortable with talking about scholars, with all due respect, Madam Superintendent, because I think that part of our job in the school district is actually to develop whole people and not just develop them academically. And I would say that in terms of looking at what we have here, we're focusing very much on the skills that, that we think of as very sort of academic kinds of skills, even as they get manifest in various ways. So the part that I kind of, you know, that there were a couple of indications of in Portrait of a Graduate that I kept sort of waiting to hear more about are the kinds of things that we've heard in other contexts. Making sure that people are healthy, both mentally and physically, and in other kinds of ways. I don't know the right way of putting that, but I would say that that's actually part of our job, too. I don't see anything here specifically that it, it may be falling under some other things, but the notion of collaboration, again, there were a couple of references to sort of workforce. We know that that's actually hugely important in terms of being able to work with people. And I would even just say, the notion of a vision of a learner, I, I know, I'm, I'm all for lifetime learners, too. But I do think that there needs to be some way in which we're communicating that, you know, this is what we are, where we are attempting to get to in some fashion, which graduate did indicate, although I appreciate Mr. Foley noting that that isn't necessarily something that all of our students even do. So I, I would note that. I'm also puzzled as to why we're talking about PB rather than PS under Problem Solver and would say that we probably should come up with some other EC so that we actually can be smoother on the thing, but I'm sure I'm not the first person to say that. In terms of the Spark Plan, one of the things that I have stood in this room a, a whole bunch of times before and said is that it's really important, people in this city become really attached to their elementary schools. And it is really important that we don't just do stuff to schools. We don't, if, understanding under ed reform that superintendents appoint principals and have that authority, I have fought and fought and fought and fought, fought to say that we never just appoint a principal. We always go through a search process. We always make sure that there's a, there's a, a way in which the community weighs in. One of the things that I thought was really actually a good outcome of the Act Relative to the Achievement Gap in 2011 was that we had innovation schools, which were developed by the schools and then went forward to the school committee and forward to the union and were accepted there. This is coming top-down, there's really no other way to put it. And I am deeply, deeply uncomfortable with that. And I, I've, I've tried to come up with a better way, a different way of saying this because I don't want to be discouraging of the notion of, you know, portfolio assessment and student leadership and project-based learning and being thoughtful about the use of technology. Those are all excellent, excellent things. But I am very, very uncomfortable. And I, you know, if I, if this were an innovation plan, I know what the law says in terms of what the rule of the school committee is. Generally speaking, when there's some sort of a school conversion, there's something that we do. I'm not going to fight over lines on this one. But I would say that there's a reason why the law usually says that you got to bring forward a, hey, we're going to do a whole different thing at this particular school through a process that starts with the school and ends up on this floor. And that's not what this is. And we can talk about a learning year, but we know that the thing is already happening and the plan is already out there. And I'm not even arguing whether it's a good plan or a bad plan or anything else. I'm just saying that in terms of process, I don't, I, I am very uncomfortable with the, the process that I'm seeing at this point. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Member Clancy.
Thank you. So through the chair, I just have a couple of questions because I know that we have students who have been participating in Portrait of a Graduate. Is there, like, is there going to be a smooth transition plan when they start doing the work of the vision of a learner?
Through the chair, at the school?
Yes.
So we're going to be working with Burncote Middle? And then, do you mean like as they progress?
Through the chair, I'm actually, I'm just thinking of, you know, students at the high schools who have already started the work with the Portrait of a Graduate.
Oh, I think Mr. Foley might be better.
So the work of achieving the goals set by, or the expectations set by the vision of a learner are embedded in the curriculum. So regardless of whether it's, you know, it's called Portrait of the Graduate or Vision of a Learner, that work is there.
Okay, so it's just there, the name is kind of just.
And it's our, our job, and it's the job at the school level, is to find in the curriculum where, where can we work these skills with kids?
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I do have, in terms of the new, the school with the Spark Plan, I know that we've taught, where there's been talk about compensation for teachers and everything. I'm just, this is just new to me. What are we looking at for like a budgetary number?
Madam Superintendent.
So through the chair, I'll let Ms., Dr. Kuriasis speak to that. It's grant-funded, I will assure the committee of that. So we've already put funds aside out of Title IV, correct, was the grant? Do you have the actual number? Not, not by memory, but it's, it is a grant-funded piece. It's not something that will come out of the, what I would refer to as the general fund.
Okay. And then one more question. If there is a family that wasn't, you know, didn't want to be part of the new plan for the school, are there other options for them through the charity administration?
So we weren't planning on having families leave. This is, right, if for some reason a family chooses to leave, of course, the first thing would be Dr. Kuriasis would talk to them to find out why. Because we would want them to stay. Because this is not something that's going to be just at Well Weakest in the future. This is the plan of how Worcester Public Schools does schooling district-wide. So, but if a parent chooses, then yes, we would follow the, the, I don't want to use the wrong term, voluntary transfer process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, and good presentation. Okay, so again, file that one. Those in favor, post-ordered. Reports to the Standing Committee, the Standing Committee on Finance met virtually in person on Monday. I mean, met on March 20th at 2023 at 5:30. Member Novick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I am going to do a couple of quick amendments to the minutes as I go here, and I promise to forward them in writing. The Finance and Operations Standing Committee held a meeting on March 20th, 2023, both online in Room 410 at the Durcan Administration Building. Present were myself and Member Mailman, Vice Chair Kamara participated remotely. Present for the administration, will I add that to it, were Mr. Allen, Mr. Hennessy, and Mr. Freeman. We did have two public comments. This again is the transportation report. So Tina Mansfield spoke of the lack of bus drivers and monitors. And Shawna Weston read testimony from Melinda Martin regarding bus monitors and concerns about making sure that we could safely get students who have special education needs on and off of buses every day. In the presentation of the administration, we, again, as we do monthly, had a conversation around the hiring of bus drivers and the ongoing training of bus drivers. Continue to have a strong partnership, of course, with mass hires. Obviously, all of these, these numbers are out of date. We had another FNO meeting earlier this week, which will, you'll get to hear about next week. We, I do want to note that, you know, the new buses are all in, obviously, and we've continued to be training buses, bus drivers and bringing them in, which was a conversation that Member Mailman brought forward in terms of exactly how are we measuring? And effectively, the, the bus drivers by month shows net change. So there, there can be more, more changes there than necessarily you're seeing, but then it's where we end up. And then I want to, I do want to rephrase the sentence here in terms of what I highlighted. We had had the FY24 budget presentation the week before. And my colleagues who've seen those, the slide that has all of the increases on it are familiar with the fact that frequently, transportation is one of them. And I know from other districts, that is actually definitely one of the categories people are seeing large increases in. We are not because we're doing transportation in-house. Obviously, we'll be having salary increases, but those are included in another line. And because we are providing transportation in-house, we're doing it without a significant increase. We do have the chart as per usual. On a roll call of three to zero, the motion to hold, the item was approved. And a roll call of three to zero, the motion to adjourn was approved at 5:54 PM. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Also, we have motion to approve, roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kamara?
Yes.
Mailman?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Standing Committee on Governmental Support Issues met virtually and in person on Tuesday, March 28th at 5:00 PM.
Through the chair, we're going to hold that till next. Yes, thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kamara?
Yes.
Mailman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have the Standing Committee on Teaching Learning and Student Support met virtually and in person on Monday, April 10th at 5:30.
So we're going to be holding the TLSS meeting minutes from March 27th and March 10th tonight.
So you're going to do on the March 27th and on?
We'll be holding March 27th and April 10th. I'll be taking the minutes from April 24th. I'll be reporting out.
So we can hold, a roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kamara?
Yep.
Ms. Mailman?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
So we're going to go to the Standing Committee on Teaching Learning and Student Support met virtually on Monday, April 24th at 2023.
Thank you. So there was one item on this agenda, and it was GB 3-102.1 from the administration to request that the school committee consider formal recommendation of an elementary ELA core curriculum program for implementation in the 2023-2024 school year. Administration spoke to the desire to select an elementary ELA curriculum program that supports evidence-based teaching of English and English arts standards in grades K through six for implementation, implementation starting in 20, school year 24. The current curriculum of we have of Fontes and Pennell does not meet expectations. Administration shared pilot programs that were offered in grades K, 2, and 4, as well as the input teachers gave on select criteria through bi-weekly surveys. Pilot teachers and. assessments, shared student and teacher experience during the pilot, supporting all learners, and the program can be adjusted to English language learners and students on IEPs. They also shared the three-year implementation plan along with considerations for adoption and implementation for each year of the plan. I spoke to the positive feedback that I received myself from contacting, um, teachers that were part of the pilot programs and participants. I talked about the importance of how we have worked for several years on needing to get something that it was a curriculum that was based on the science of reading and knowledge-based reading and knowing that what we currently had was lacking for our students. Vice Chair Mailman had some questions and comments about the pilot and the curriculum itself and also had some questions regarding the financials and the cost of the program and any add-ons that would be required for any supplements. Administration noted financial info will be provided to FNO Standing Committee and the Budget Office. Vice Chair Mailman also asked for any comments that might not have been just positive reviews, but what were any of the potential setbacks or negative feedback or what might be some challenges for this particular program, as well as what the background of the teachers that participated in the pilot were. The administration stated that teachers with varied levels of experience participate in the pilot, but that we do not typically utilize, um, special ed teachers or specific reading specialists with this type of pilot as it's being piloted in our regular ed classrooms. It was also asked how long have current users been using the program and information was been, was provided by administration. And they're also going to get additional information regarding other districts and similar-sized districts that are, or similar-type districts that are using it. Vice Chair Mailman also asked about the cultural responsibility of, or the cultural responsiveness of the curriculum and information was provided by administration that while there was, were some areas that they felt that, that may not have been as in-depth as that they wanted it to be, that there are opportunities to supplement, as there are with any curriculum that's selected, uh, there are times where you need to supplement for certain specific needs in your class and district. Member Kamara talked about demographics and requiring a culturally responsible curriculum, or responsive curriculum, and that the third, had wanted to see a third option presented and felt, you know, that the process was rather quick and uncertain on the dollar amount and hesitated to approve. Administration did share that gallery walks were done. I believe there were actually seven programs that were initially looked at and that there are three options were available and principals in their schools selected two out of the three and no one, only one school picked the third option. And reiterated that this program will help our students to read on grade level and the importance of selecting what is considered a green program as designated by the level of acceptability, I guess is basically how you'd say it. Um, administration could certainly comment to that more if people had questions about it, but we know that this is a green curriculum option. Member Kamara asked the data shows in terms of goals of the district and results of the pilot program and for additional information. Member Kamara made a motion to hold the item and on a roll call of two to one, the motion was denied. Member Kamara then made a motion to obtain more information and detailed data from the pilot program before approval. On a roll call of three to zero, that motion was approved. And then I made a motion to approve the curriculum and on a roll call of two to one, the motion was denied. That is the end of my report.
Member Clancy?
Thank you. Um, just through the chair, I asked that if we could take two of those motions, if we can vote on them separately, please.
Okay, which ones are those?
The motion was, um, member Kamara's motion to obtain more information and detailed data from the pilot program. And then the other one was Ms. McCullough's, uh, motion to approve the CKLA curriculum.
Okay. Okay. So we got the report. We can take those two items separately. Once we decide, anybody else want to speak? Ms. Novak? Uh, member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as we'll note later this evening, the responsibility of the school committee, um, in, under Massachusetts general law, in the role of curriculum approval is actually very high-level. Um, it's up to our, um, up to us to determine if the curricula supports our district goals and if it aligns with state standards. That's it. Speaking as a former teacher, I know that teachers pour their hearts into the classroom and there are few things more disheartening than to be directed to do something that you know is actively harmful or simply not helpful to your students. And I know that having been there. That is the position we placed our elementary teachers in these past years regarding the ELA curriculum. Despite repeated attempts by several members of this committee to set it straight, the previous administration was absolutely committed to a curriculum that we knew and was ongoingly nationally reported to be, not what was needed in the classroom. So to the teachers, the principals, the coaches and so forth who have fought for years for us to do better, I want to thank you for your faithfulness. And if you quietly closed the door and simply ensured that your students had what was actually needed, good for you. This committee has a responsibility to depend on the professionals who work in curriculum and those who work with students to give us the feedback when we make those decisions. And we owe them professional respect and professional courtesy in doing so. And frankly, some of that has been lacking in the public process. We need to be better to our staff and to our employees than that. I do also want to note from a fiscal perspective, we have required by federal legislation to set aside 20% of our SOR III spending, which is about $18 million for the Worcester Public Schools, for what the federal government persists in referring to as learning loss. The funding for this curriculum not only falls into this category for reporting purposes, it also repairs what we know has in fact been a cause of less learning for our students. So this is not only an allowed expense, it is a strongly supported and encouraged expense at both the state and the federal level. We will thus be repairing two issues from prior leadership while giving our students and our teachers a curriculum about which we know them to be enthusiastic, which not only meets state standards but is green-rated, which will actually support students' learning to read. So thus, Mr. Chair, I support moving forward with this administration's recommendation immediately and without further reporting or further ado. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, member Johnson?
Yes, thank you, um, to the chair. Just on top of that, I, and I don't know if I, if we need to try to amend this or make a motion, just to maybe get a report back maybe halfway through the year on, um, the response, on the cultural response, um, of this and kind of what the barriers are around that, if we could just report back maybe, I guess, December. Can we look at December? Thank you.
December?
Yes, thank you.
So it's going back on the cultural responsiveness, okay. In December, okay. All those in favor, opposed or ordered? Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair. Um, I do also want to extend my heartfelt, um, I guess gratitude in terms of all of the preparation that went into, um, the piloting of the CKLA and WISD and WISDOM and even prior to that with regards to all the educators that did, um, put in time to select a curriculum and where that be, um, two were the ones that were chosen and the third that was cast out. Um, so my main concern, um, with this entire process, I think I've been very clear with that, um, is one such. Um, and I've had phone calls also from parents. Um, some of them, you know, spoke to the, one spoke today, but a few that didn't want to come and speak because the fear that their families would face retaliation in the district, which was pretty sad. Um, but a lot of the concerns that I have heard around this, um, and also through my own research of this and which, um, I have shared in our TLSS meeting, um, the biggest one that being our district goals, um, pairing with the curriculum goals, um, showing, um, that, showing the data that supports the goals for our district. Um, I do want to say that I got some clarification, um, from the administration, um, um, and what is it, two, three, two days ago or so, um, but those were not particularly the questions that I, I asked for. Um, my main concern also that compiles with the concern of family in the district, um, ties into, yes, the cultural sensitivity of the curriculum that is lacking. Um, I, you know, we heard the district, um, the administration plan in terms of addressing that, but it is rather problematic, I think, if we were looking at a curriculum, first and foremost, we should have had sets of criteria that are important and looking at the fact that we represent, um, a district that is, um, diverse in demographic and linguistic. Um, I think those, you know, that should, this should have been a priority, um, rather than adding on to, um, a curriculum that didn't, that does not really meet that need. Um, a lot of things that I have looked at online, um, through peer review, uh, research that stemmed from the link through CKLA, um, some of the barriers, and I think at the TLSS meeting, um, member, uh, Millman had stressed some of the issues, like, we've heard a lot of great things and I for one, I question everything, whether it's good or not. Uh, we've heard a lot of great things about this curriculum, but it would also be appreciated if we heard some neck, you know, some things that, how we can improve. And tonight, I, there was one educator who actually presented, you know, um, something of substance, um, and then she went on to kind of disclose in how in her classroom she was able to get around that. I think those are things that, um, would have benefited in terms of my knowledge because a lot of the things that she did mention are a lot of the, um, let's say, um, the ways in which the curriculum lacks. So to, you know, to, to hear how we're gonna deal with that will be, you know, that I think is what I'm trying to get a grips on. Uh, one of the other things that I learned from my research, um, and I hope that we're able to, um, meet is that the curriculum may not be the best for kids who are, um, from low income or kids who are ELL. And I hear that we, in the district, that we have piloted this within our own, um, schools, like Woodland Academy, where, you know, some of our kids do, are a part of that economic, um, you know, demographic, which is great to hear. Um, and I think more of that would, consistent with our district goals would be, um, you know, things of, uh, things that will, that I would like to hear or hear more of in terms of how we're gonna, how we're going to, um, you know, um, address those. Um, so another thing that I learned about this curriculum, um, is the fact that it's scripted curriculum, um, is the fact that, um, uh, because, uh, it's scripted, it does not allow for educators to add into it. And the educator that did, that did talk about the, the, um, her issues with it and talked about how she was able to, you know, meet that, that was, that these are some of the holistic, um, uh, uh, you know, ways in which this curriculum does not holistically meet that. Um, so I'm interested in knowing how, as a district, we are going to support, um, the individual, individual knowledge and abilities and creativity of educators who will be implementing this. Um, so one, I want to know culturally sensitive, how we're going to, a little bit more lengthier, um, how we're going to inspire critical thinking within, um, our, within the kids. Um, because even though like the curriculum does, you know, provide, you know, a, a, a array of, um, of, um, learning mechanisms, but some of the criticisms that I've heard that I've read on this curriculum, um, looks at, um, that the curriculum also introduces, you know, big words and big thinking, which are all great. Um, I definitely support the need for us to continue to, um, support our ed, our kids to do, to, to, to grow in their own education and literacy skills, but I want to know how are we gonna do this for our kids who, a lot of them are ELLs, low income, or have other disabilities that we, that we have addressed, um, that we know about in our district. Um, so I will, I will, you know, I will leave this here and say that holistically, I would just want to know a little bit about how we're going to, to, you know, target these things as a district. Um, and I would love, you know, to get more understanding of, again, our district goals that ties to the data of how, um, the curriculum meets our goals. But I want, like, numeric data.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, thank you, Member Kamara. So I'm gonna speak, um, initially, um, on a more global level. And what's really important, and I know my educators in the classroom would agree with me, that curricular resources, they're a tool. They do not define everything that a classroom teacher does. And, and educators who, um, are committed to their work, and we know in Worcester Public Schools they are, the tool is used as a base, it is not the ceiling. To, to he, so I come from a state where for 28 years, I, we, you had to have adopted curricular materials. That was a requirement of the state. When I learned that that's not the case here, I had a better understanding of why there was so much conversation about curriculum. I can't imagine starting teaching and not having that initial teacher addition to at least give me a baseline to then grow and add to based off of who's sitting in front of me and what those children need. So that's what this curricular resource does for our educators. Then from there, and I see you shaking your head, so if you want to even add anything, I'm more than willing to yield some time to you. Then from there, what it does is it allows our classroom teachers during, um, professional learning time, their, their planning time, to have a common set of materials that then they can open up and they can plan together without having to pull all these different things from the, um, the internet, which is what's been, they spend so much time doing. What we know about this program is it is grounded in the science of reading, which we know is so important for all of our scholars, right? And I took some time today to flip through the, um, a grade K teacher addition and a grade two. And I specifically was looking to see, do I see elements of, um, how to teach reading? And I did. Do I see elements of, um, how to make it accessible for language learners, knowing who our, who our students are? And I did, I saw that. Do I believe that we need more? Yes. Do I know that in the 28 years of working in California, there was never a curriculum that met all the needs? Absolutely. And so we're never gonna find one that meets all of our needs. What we do is with that base, then we augment. And I specifically looked for, are my children valued in these pictures? And in some, they were. In, in one unit in kindergarten, for example, the Five Senses, it had images of all kinds of children, everybody, every child would have seen themselves in that. In other ones, I saw Greek myths, maybe not so much. So we're gonna see some that have it and some that don't, and that's where the, we'll work with our educators to do some curriculum mapping to say, how do we further augment this so that it indeed meets both the, the purpose of a language arts curriculum for young children, which is to teach them how to read and to teach them how to be critical thinkers in their reading. This will do that. It will be necessary to bring in additional augmented resources that we do with our teachers, which they have that expertise. So to your question about the creativity, that's where they bring it in, right? That's where they get to add to it, rather than, again, starting from scratch, which is just a lot of work for a classroom teacher to do. So we do that during the professional learning time. We'll do that with district leadership and our teachers. We will then supplement financially as needed, bringing that to the committee to say, here we found that we need more of something to augment a particular unit and we'll work with our teachers to say what would make sense for that based off of what we know for our children. This, the other part of this that's really important is Worcester's in a, a time where we are shifting, um, I've, I've heard, you know, district goals used a lot, right? Well, I believe that we're still working on new district goals. We are, um, we're going to have a revised strategic plan and that'll include some new values and, and core beliefs about our district, which I know from this committee includes work around equity and work around valuing and respecting and honoring the diversity that sits in our classrooms and the strengths that that comes with. With that and our new chief equity officer, because again, we know, um, our current chief diversity officer is going to be retiring, part of that individual's work is going to be to work with the teams on. we are shifting, I've, I've heard, you know, district goals used a lot, right? Well, I believe that we're still working on new district goals. We are, we're going to have a revised strategic plan. And that'll include some new values and, and core beliefs about our district, which I know from this committee includes work around equity and work around valuing and respecting and honoring the diversity that sits in our classrooms and the strengths that that comes with. With that, and our new chief equity officer, because again, we know our current chief diversity officer is going to be retiring, part of that individual's work is going to be to work with the teams on, how do you look at this curriculum and make sure that indeed it is reflecting the cultural responsiveness that we want to see? So a few committee meetings ago, when we brought that, that job description forward, if you'll recall, I said, equity can't sit by itself, right? It can't sit just in one office. It has to be what we do throughout the district. This will be a great place for that new person to work with the team, to take a look at what we have as the teachers are getting trained on how to use it and we start putting it into practice and say, here are opportunities for us to improve. And then we do that through our teacher teams and our equity office with our curriculum. So it's going to be a work in progress. The, the time when I find a curriculum that meets all of the needs, that's the time for me to retire, because I've yet to find it. And, and, and that's okay, because actually, I don't want my teachers just opening up a book and just reading it step by step. I want them to be engaging with it and watching what's happening with children and then making those, those decisions right then and there.
Madam Kamara?
Through the chair, thank you. I think asking for a curriculum to meet all the needs, I know, does not meet the need of everything, so I think backwards sometimes. But I think one of the things that I am conveying is that because we know that things don't meet the needs of everybody, where there are deficiencies, how, what are the solutions? Or what are we thinking about that? That's the piece that has been a little, not too strong for me. But I do appreciate this, you know, all of the discussion around this. And I, I do want to second the motion that Member Jermaine made with, coming back to this curriculum, getting some kind of like assessment from it. I think he said in December, I heard. I will appreciate that, and I do want to support that, or I don't know if I can say I support that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Member Clancy? I'm sorry.
So through the chair, Dr. Manera's actually just kind of stole my thunder, because that's exactly what I was going to say. When we choose a curriculum, it's a tool for our teachers. And it's our teachers who, in every single day, supplement all our curriculum, because they know our students best and they have to do it all the time. And that's the magic of teaching, is that they're still able to be creative, even though some things have tied their hands. But that's where we let their creativity come in, and our teachers are amazing, and they do it every day, throughout the day, throughout the year. And that's what they're best at. So choosing a curriculum, like you said, is a tool. And I can't, I, I'm going to vote in favor of this curriculum, because I've heard from many teachers, administrators this week, and even tonight, the progress that some of our teachers reported that their students have made in the assessments that they've given in the classroom, especially with their, their English language learners, is incredible in just this short amount of time, they were able to pilot this program. And it's, I can't wait to see the growth, you know, the end of next year and to see, you know, how this program really helps our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Mailman?
Thank you. I wonder if I could, through the chair, ask my colleague, Member Novick, to tell it, tell me again what the role of school committee is in curriculum. You stated it very nicely, I think there were two things.
Can you take a seat then, we'll have a member?
No, because I have more after that. Oh, I have to stand up till I'm done.
I can just read it, if you'd like. The role of curriculum, broadly speaking, is to determine if curriculum supports our district goals and aligns with state standards.
Thank you. I believe that when we hired Dr. Monares last year, we made a really big shift in the journey of this school system. And that hiring in and of itself is going to take us to a new place. And all the goals we'll get, you know, we'll work through all our committees and all our meetings, and we're going to get there. But there is a, there are people in this community and educators in our system that are, that probably don't have the level of trust that we, after how many months, why would we expect them to? And I think it's so important for us at times like this to say, it, look, trust me, this is high level, this is Sue Mailman, I'm not going to the, the, you know, nitty gritty on this stuff. It was not hard to figure out that there are problems with the cultural responsiveness of this curriculum. And so I get, my reason for hitting hard on it the other day is because I want us to, I want us to be transparent about this stuff. And I want us to say, it's not that great, and there's a lot of districts that are making other changes, and it's a critical component of this curriculum. So I don't think it would be appropriate for us to just pass it through. And respectfully, I believe all the teachers are loving this program and liking it, but I want all of our teachers to hear the concerns of others in the community. And I, like Member Kamara, had several phone calls and people that were concerned about speaking up. I want us to set a different tone in this district. So I am going to vote for this as well, because we need to move on. So none of this discussion was about not, not understanding that we need to do something with Fuentes and Pennell, as Molly has said many times, that you guys have worked on for many years. It is about where we're going with this thing now. And I think this is a really important component that did not get as much, that did not get as much time to our TLSS committee on Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have three motions. They were passed, Mr. Johnson's motion. Okay, we can take, I guess, Member Kamara's motion from subcommittee regarding providing more data? I think that was it? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, probably doing so.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, it was to provide more data prior to adoption, which I think is a very important point.
Okay, yeah. Prior to adoption, okay. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clancy?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Kamara?
Yes.
Ms. Mailman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
No.
Ms. O'Callaghan, Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. Next is approval of the curriculum. Roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kamara?
Unfortunately, no. No.
Ms. Mailman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Callaghan, Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Approval of the...
Sorry, just point of clarification, if I may, to administration. Do they need reconsideration on this so that they can put the order in, say, tomorrow?
So they'll reconsider, okay, the vote is the vote to take the reconsideration. Then we'll do the reconsideration. This is the vote to take the reconsideration on the passing of the curriculum, right?
Generally, I believe, Mr. Chair, procedurally, you suspend the rules and then we vote to reconsider.
Oh, yeah, we're doing that. That's the first vote, correct. The first vote is to suspend for the, to take the vote later on for the, whatever. Roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kamara?
This is just a...
Ms. Kamara?
It's a vote to take the reconsideration on the next vote. To be consistent, you would...
I'm a bit confused.
This is very confusing. We're going to change this rule, but I get to suspend the rules first in order to take the reconsideration. So I can't take the reconsideration vote until we suspend the rules to give us permission to take the reconsideration vote.
Sure.
What?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Mailman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Callaghan, Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. And the next item is the reconsider, the motion to reconsider the approval of the curriculum. Roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
I'll pride the vote, I'm sorry.
To the chair?
Yeah, go on.
My question is, do you mind repeating that? And then secondly, I would like to know, are we going to take his motion, is that the end?
Jermaine's?
Yeah.
No, we already voted on that.
We already did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't take a roll call, I just, Madam.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So the, this is a moat to reconsider.
Ms. Clancy?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Kamara?
I'm going to follow the horse. No.
No? Okay.
Couldn't hear it?
No.
No, thank you. Ms. Mailman?
No.
Ms. McCullough?
No.
Ms. O'Callaghan, Novick?
No.
And Mayor Petty?
No. Okay, motion to approve the remaining of the committee's report. I don't think there's any roll call votes there, so we would, all those in favor, opposed so ordered. Okay. So make a motion that we have governance look at that rule of reconsideration, so we can fix that. All those in favor, opposed so ordered. Okay. Next is approval of grants, another finance items, to consider approval of the prior year payment of ACCO in the amount of $464.70. Roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Kamara?
Yes.
Ms. Mailman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Callaghan, Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next one is to review the process of scheduling graduations and final days for seniors to ensure we are in line with DESI policies and requirements. Member McCullough?
Thank you. And just a point of clarification on this, this also includes eighth grade promotion ceremonies. But other than that, as it reads to administration, please.
Okay, those in favor, opposed so ordered. Um, member... Sure.
Are we concerned that we're not following DESI's rules?
Member McCullough?
I think we need to take a look, through the chair, I think we need to take a look at how we set that up currently to ensure that we are. I think that there could be some questions around last day for seniors being set ahead of time, when we don't know how many snow days there are and students are required to be in school for so many days regardless if they're seniors or not.
Thank you.
And there are also things with middle school graduations where snow days aren't factored in currently post COVID. That was a big change, because we started hosting those at Foley Stadium. So just to look at the policies.
Thank you.
Okay. We send that to administration. So next is considering update to the lottery procedures for the coming school year in order to provide for sibling access, children of teachers, and not aspects of the lottery process that are consistent across the district. Member Mailman?
Thank you. I filed this item because after, so we have had a discussion and communication that we are going to, we have many programs in this district where folks want to get into. There are lottery-based programs, there are important programs, and families and kids want to participate. We know that the administration is going to look at our systems across the district next year, and so that we have some consistency with them. My item that I filed, and I used a couple of examples, but I could have used probably 12 other examples, and my item is to simply ask administration if there are a few of these lottery rules that we can be consistent on before waiting for another year of review. And the examples I put were, you know, sibling access. So when I listen to the dual language program, you know, if a dual language student gets into the dual language program, then their sibling comes along later on, they can get in as well. There are professional courtesies shown across the district for teachers and that they have children in a particular school where they work. And that, I thought, is something that seems to be applied disproportionately across our lottery programs. And just one other thing I'll mention with the floor is that our appeal process, actually on some of the lotteries that I'm familiar with, really puts the, the onus on the principal to be the bad guy. And we have, we are investing in our administration and this capable team over here. And I'd like to think one of the things that we could take away from our principals is the administration of that and the responding to that, and hopefully this great group of people over here could take that over. And I just, you know, there's so many, we've talked before about the audits and all the things that we have to look at and how time-consuming this is. Is there any low-hanging fruit on our lotteries where we could, where we could simplify things for families and teachers? It would be a benefit to teachers to apply a professional courtesy across the district. Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get just clarification on what, what this is. So are you looking at administration to look at that for students that didn't get in this year? That are siblings or whatever, that they could actually get in for this coming fall?
I would, yeah, if it makes common sense. I would like to ask this administration to, to come back with some common sense responses that could impact students this year or next year. I understand all the dates, I understand all the programs have different requirements, I understand, maybe we can't do it. I just would like to hear them identify some things that we might be able to do for our teachers and for our families. Thank you.
So you're saying for this year and next year? Put, yeah, next year.
Whatever administration might bring back to us. And maybe there are three different items that I didn't bring up, but that was my motion.
Okay. Member Johnson?
I'm sorry, just in regards to that, if, if administration were to look at that, I just ask that, that be actually brought to, given to us. I, I don't even think it needs to be brought back here, but if we all get, provided that information, whether or not you make that decision to do that this coming year, this school year or not, because I think the original motion was to look at everything across the board next year. But I just wanted to be clear that, Member Mailman's asking for you to also take in consideration of what happened this year and look at some of those situations. I'm just asking if you do that, that we all get informed that that is going to be done if you choose to do so prior to the fall of 2023. Thank you.
Member Johnson? I'm sorry, Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize if I, if I missed this when I stepped out for a minute. We've already conducted the lotteries for all of the programs, correct? Okay. So I would oppose this if what we're talking about is for next school year, because it's not fair. You don't change the rules after you already pulled the names. And you don't start making exceptions after you've already pulled the names. I actually hate our lotteries. I, I wish we didn't have them at all. And I, you know, think it's not, not a great way to do stuff in terms of kids. We do have them, but I, I absolutely think that we need to look at process and procedure and, and equity and making sure that things are the same across the district. Entirely agree. Also know that we cannot do it now. So if the, if the item is going to be as it currently stands, I will oppose it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So you're offering an amendment? Or?
I beg your pardon?
Offering an amendment?
Well, I believe that the, the process is already actually in TLSS, and there's already, there are, that this is already a work in train for future years. So that, I don't think that, and correct me if I am wrong, by all means, but I, I don't think that there's a, a need for another item if what we're talking about is future years. I also will say honestly that I know that administration's working on it.
Can, can we even change something before the DESI gives us, do you need permission from DESI to do any of this before you, you can't just change mid-year, I don't think?
For the vocational program, we certainly can't at this point. And, right, because that's a fall September, I think, or something like that?
Correct, there's some, there's some guidelines. But if you would, well, we would come back with information if, if the committee so chooses.
Okay. Member McCullough, followed by Member Clancy? Member Clancy?
I was just going to, through the chair, to the point, if it's something specific for this year with the lottery for the vocational schools, no, we cannot do that, because that has to be approved by DESI and by October of the year prior. And there, there is a current item where we did discuss the things for, well, that's going to get reported item, that was already filed. But certainly, if it's something for a future term, that can go and be looked at. But for this year, any vocational program lottery would have had to be approved by DESI by October of 2022.
Okay. Member Clancy?
Thank you. So through the chair, I agree. I, if this, if we're looking at this for the upcoming school year, vocational or any part of students that took place, place in the lottery program, and this could potentially bump students who have already been notified that they've been accepted to a program, I can't, you know, move ahead with agreeing on this either. And I feel that if we already have this item in TLSS, I'm not particularly sure what another item on this topic is going to do. It can be discussed at TLSS, the particular portions of... It can be discussed at T L S S, the particular portions of it that may wanna be looked at by administration for making exceptions to the lottery process as it stands. But if it's coming, if it's for the upcoming school year, I can't, you know, agree to possibly bump students who have already been accepted into the programs.
Okay. Member Mailman?
I probably wasn't clear. I just want to reiterate that, you know, because four times people have said the vocational program, this is not just about the vocational program. We have a lot of lottery-based programs in our system, and some of those systems allow siblings and some of those systems don't. To me, that is a no-brainer. But I get your October rule. Here's my problem. If we have, I don't know, a dozen lottery kind of programs in this city where, and we need to make a change in a rule for next October for specifically the vocational one across multiple schools now, then why can't we ask for the low-hanging fruit? Because I'm gonna be shocked at this juncture to think we're gonna get a real response to all of the lotteries by September for us to act on. So I'd like to keep my motion. I'd like, if you got, if you cannot see the value in taking a look at what we have done right now, then the next best thing is to get something as soon as possible that would be changes that we should make in fairness to families and students for before whatever this long, lengthy process of lottery evaluation is gonna bring. So I'll amend it to say as soon as possible prior to any next year dates that we need to hit. Thank you.
For the year after. Right, right, okay, sounds reasonable. Member Novick?
So I would support that with one possible change, because I don't want to support a motion that already says we're automatically gonna provide for sibling access, and let me tell you why. I have three children.
What access? I missed what you said.
I don't want to, it says to provide for sibling access, which means that we're saying we want you to come back with a policy that says that siblings are allowed to automatically get in, that's providing for sibling access. I actually don't support that as a policy. And I say that as someone whose kids have actually not both gotten into programs. I don't think that just because one kid gets in, the other kid should get in. And I, and I say that as someone who has sent kids to three different elementary schools in the same year. I don't think that that's, first of all, I think that doesn't see kids as individuals. And also, what are we, what are we doing? Like, are we, are we just drawing names from hats or is this based on something else? Because if it's based on something else, then we have to actually be talking about kids, students as individuals. So to, in order to consider would be an amendment that I would, I would vote for.
And to consider, it says to consider.
It says to provide. We would have to say consider twice, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, you want to consider twice?
So to consider an update to the lottery procedures for the coming year in order to consider sibling access.
Okay, that's reasonable, because we don't know what the answer is yet anyways, so, okay. Okay, that's fine. Member Kamara?
I just have a clarifying question. With regards to the comment from member Novick, I don't agree or, I don't, I don't support if one sibling gets in, that the other sibling gets in. Was that the statement that you made? Okay. So I wanna know, how is that different from what we do at Worcester Tech where if you're a twin, and then the twin gets in and then the other one gets to get in?
That's why we're having, that's why I think the main point of the audit is try to figure all these different rules we have for different schools, different lottery systems, and try to make them consistent. That's a good question, and I don't have an answer for you. Member McCullough?
Through the chair, our current policy is that twins do get in.
Right, that's true. I think that's the point that member Kamara was making.
Such we need a curriculum. But anyways, that was my point.
Yeah.
And I think, again...
Nope, I got it. Member McCullough?
Thank you. I apologize for the misunderstanding. I just wanted clarification for that because the rationale that was made when that decision happened was that they are in the same grade in school as the twins, and that was why that was made this current time. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be looked at, but that's why that policy was currently set up that way per administration and then our approval.
That's good. Okay, so as amended, send that to the administration. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Okay. Request administration report fully on the plans of the CNAs for the remainder of this year and the next prior to the proposal of the fiscal year 24 budget. Member Novick?
Very briefly, Mr. Chair, this committee has been very deeply engaged, for obvious reasons, in medical considerations and in nursing coverage and so forth of our schools, and that had, that did include a substantial conversation at the last budget over whether or not we were gonna continue to have the CNAs in our schools. And I remember in particular, member Kamara raising the issue more than once in our deliberations. I know that their administration is internally discussing changes to that for next year, and rather than have that come through as sort of the, you know, here are all of the things that are changing for FY '24, I'd appreciate it if we could actually get a report on that ahead of time, please.
Okay, so send that to the administration. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Request administration report on the planned reorganization of the social emotional learning department, including lines of authority and evaluation, planned additional staffing and communications of staff, schools and families prior to proposal of the fiscal year 24 budget. Ms. Novick?
Again, very briefly, Mr. Chair, as my colleagues are well aware, there are also changes planned for next year for the social emotional learning department in a number of different ways. And I would say that in keeping with sort of a number, a theme that we've seen a couple of times this evening already, the notion of sort of building relationships and making sure that we're doing things with people rather than it feeling as if we're doing it to them, I think is part of what needs to be worked on here if possible. So if we could also, again, have information, further information on that.
Okay, so send that to the administration. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Requested administration clarify plans for the rising seniors and subsequent secondary students sustained enrollment while supporting to ensure success in the dual language program for next year to all involved as soon as possible. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was indicated by my fellow dual language parent earlier this evening during public comment, there's been yet another round of considerable frustration of the current high school juniors. And let me just reflect that as a parent of a student in that class, depending on how you count, this is something like the third or fourth time where there hasn't seemed to be a plan for the next year. I do want to give my deep, deep appreciation to Dr. Morris, who took time out of her schedule to go meet with the juniors this year. And the first reflection that I got from a student, and I, I think this says a lot about how we relate to students, is she apologized for what had happened to us, and we know that it wasn't her fault. She also brought donuts, but, so I know that there are plans, and parents and students really, really, really need to know what they are right now for all of the reasons that were eloquently pointed out earlier.
Okay. Send that to administration. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. To correct elimination, the school committee from its legal responsibility in policies of C H D, E C, I G D, and J I B. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Part of the continuing series of what happened to our policies in the past couple of years after all. So these are brought forward as sort of the next level of what is particularly of concern because as I was going through the policies and comparing them to the model state policies, in every case, these policies had a deliberate elimination of the school committee's legal authority. So just to quickly go through them, because there's only four. In the case of C H D, administration can't just create policy and have it simply live. And that actually is what our policy currently says. Policy needs to be brought back to the school committee for review and acceptance. In E C, the school committee functions, of course, as a budgetary oversight, which obviously has real responsibilities when it comes to buildings and grounds. And I G D, as we saw this evening, school committee's purview and curriculum is relying on professional staff and then onward from the rest of the committee. And then G I B, in terms of student involvement and decision-making, this one actually attempts to rewrite state law because M G L 7138 M is actually very specific that the student advisory meets not with the superintendent but with the school committee. And yet our policy says they meet with the superintendent. And then the policy also completely eliminates the student ex officio member. So that, of course, didn't actually change state law, it just meant that our policy wasn't aligned with state law. I think it's crucial, obviously, that our policy is aligned with state law and also preserve the purview of the school committee. Happy to send these to governance or if anyone wants to simply adopt them this evening, certainly can do so.
What if we just amend it, have it come back for approval?
I mean, whatever you'd like to, the corrections are here, it's up to the committee.
We, we, because I just have the administration update it with this and have it come back to us for approval? Or is that fine? You want it in committee? Either way.
So through the chair, I mean, I, looking at these policies, clearly they're, the changes that have been made are what need to be in the policy, so I have no issue voting on these here tonight on the floor.
Okay. Then we can read them when they come in, and we take a final vote when we see them. Okay? Member Kamara?
Yeah, I do, I think what you mentioned earlier, if this can be sent to the administration and then brought back to us, I would like for that to occur too.
Yeah, they can make, update the policy and bring it back to us, and we can vote it.
Okay, that's just procedurally not how policy gets amended, though. If we're gonna amend a policy, it goes to governance and it's done by the school committee, not by the administration.
Right, but we can have it and send it to committee if you'd like.
Right, so if that's what people, we can either vote it on the floor, these are actually the changes that are gonna need to be made. I mean, the language is already there. It is obviously up to the committee if they wanna have a deliberation in governance first, accepting the changes and then do it again here, that's fine. That was what the referral was. But the change, the, the language changes are already present in front of you.
I was just gonna have it come back in a draft. We're not gonna pass it.
That is a draft, that's what you have as a backup.
Oh, okay.
The change, yeah, the changes are already in the backup. The, the red line changes are actually the, what the model policy, model state policy is.
Okay.
I try to be thorough in my policy backups because I know that...
I gotta give you credit for even doing it, so.
It bothers me.
I'm just astonished that this was a little change without our approval, right?
Exactly, Mr. Chair, and I'm glad you said that rather than me. Yes, these changes were made without school committee approval, which again, again, I think makes it particularly crucial that the school committee be very thorough in voting each of them because it is actually our purview, not administration's.
Okay. So we'll send it to committee, come back with the, your, your recommendation. And member Kamara?
I'm sorry, to the chair, can you just...
Oh, so I didn't realize that, that there was, I didn't see the...
No, yeah, it was in the backup.
Yeah, the red line.
But I think, as what I mentioned in our last meeting, as the fact that we are all on the school committee, I think if there are such policies that need to be made by school committee, I would appreciate if this can go through a process rather than it being done by one person and then we are voting on something on it, you know, at this moment, even though it is, it is right in the backup which strikes.
Right.
And this is something that I would like to bring up at large in our work processes. If there are any, if there are any kind of policies that we need to, that needs to be at the awareness of school committee members, I would appreciate if we can, if we have that opportunity to also have a say in those policies being changed or not.
I hear what you're saying. That's what, that's why we're gonna send it to the subcommittee, so people can have a say in the matter.
Right.
And come back here and you can have a say in the matter, or even tonight, if you had an amendment or something, you're likely to have a say in the matter. This is how it just starts, is if someone has to put it out there.
Yeah.
Then we can have a debate about it.
Okay.
So send that to governance. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. To consider setting the school committee general meeting for 2324 to take into the consideration the federal Massachusetts religious holidays. 2324, okay, so, oh, member Kamara, I'm sorry.
My only thing with this is that, and I think we did that in the last 2022, 23 academic year or school year, but I would like to share this, to, to send this, to share this for us to look at 2324 and to really account for April, because it seems like when we made the, the calendar for the school year 22, 23, is that we kind of like forgot about things like the holiday, religious holidays that took place in April, and it just kind of really, you know, circumvented a lot of our, you know, the calendar. So I will, one for us to have April in mind and all the important religious holidays or all the holidays in mind prior to, so that when we do get those, calendar for 2324, all those are being done ahead, because that's what people do in the professional workplaces. Thank you.
So we'll send that to the curric's office when we do the schedule for...
Thank you.
Don't we do it for a calendar, a calendar year? I don't know, but, okay. So, others in favor, oppose, so ordered. So we all said that, we're gonna have a, I know you're all disappointed, but we have a motion to adjourn, and all those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Have a nice weekend, everybody.
You too.